Hi, would you bow with me, please? Our Heavenly Father, we're so blessed to be in this country where we can worship You freely. We thank You so much for this gathering and the people who've come to hear their representatives and hear about what's going on in this country. And Lord, we just ask Your blessing today on everyone here and every family represented. We ask Your blessing on Texas and on this great country in this holy night we pray. Amen.
Well, good morning. I'm gonna make a campaign promise to you right now. I will not be singing on this stage, ever. You can clap for that. Nobody wants to hear that, I promise you. Hey Reagan, thank you. Let's give the mayor a big hand for what she does for Mineral Wells. You have great leadership right here. I don't want to leave anybody out. I know there's several elected officials here, and I'm gonna get to Glenn here in just a second. But if you're an elected official, will you please stand? Thank you all very much. Let's give him a round of applause. We're really blessed to have great leadership in Mineral Wells, great leadership in this part of Texas, and proud to be a part of a community that is doing great things. I don't see Randy Nix just yet, maybe he'll stop by. But I want you to know that he's been in contact with me throughout the last couple of months. There is a bill, a piece of legislation, that my colleague from Louisiana, Clay Higgins, is sponsoring, and it has to do with historic buildings and making sure that the tax code, which we're gonna talk about taxes in a minute, but making sure the tax code recognizes the importance of the banker and of the crazy water and of the historic buildings that are right here. And that's something that I'm gonna continue to fight for. Clay Higgins out of Louisiana, myself are on this, and Randy Nix right here in the local community is calling on behalf of everyone here to make sure that the right thing is done and that we can do what we need to do in Washington to help local businesses and to help local communities revitalize and restore these buildings to what their original glory was. So I just want you to know that all of our elected officials here and that your local leaders are doing a phenomenal job. Representative Rogers, thank you for what you did in your first session in Austin. Y'all, I don't know if you know the depth of work that was done in Austin. And rather than me go through, I know we've only got an hour here, but rather than me go through in detail, what I thought I'd do is let Glenn come up here and just give you a rundown. But we're talking protecting our Second Amendment rights, protecting the sanctity of life, doing things in Austin that meanwhile, we've got, how many, 40, 50 folks that walked out of the session about a week and a half ago? You know, they just kinda abdicated their responsibility to the state of Texas. Representative Rogers is trying to get things done and has done that, and he's passed a tremendous amount of very meaningful legislation, and meanwhile, folks walked out of Austin, literally walked out. Suspect come back for a special session, but Glenn, you wanna say a couple of words about, maybe an update about what's going on in Austin? Let's give him a round of applause, y'all.
Thank you, August. First, I want to say something about August.
Several weeks ago. Now, we're back to good old fashioned microphones. Okay.
Seen it.
You got it?
I didn't think you'd talk that long.
Okay.
Go, 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 go. Okay, here we go. Yeah, several weeks ago, I had a number of calls, emails, texts from constituents that wanted us to secede from the Union. And you know, I know there's a lot of frustration and I get it. But my answer to that is that our country's never needed Texas and Texas values like they do right now. And thank goodness we have people in Congress like August Fluger. So I get the sentiment about wanting to secede. I know we're proud Texans, but our energies need to be focused on winning back the House so we can bring sanity back to all of Washington DC and get more people like August Fluger in office. I just got through with the best session I've ever experienced. And I can say that honestly. It's obviously my first session, and we started off with, of course, we started off with COVID. We had DPS and state guardsmen throughout the Capitol in riot gear. It was after the January 6th event in DC. And so that was kinda the backdrop where we started our session. COVID, that, and then in February, we have Winter Storm Yuri. All those were distractions and kept us from what we thought we were gonna be doing in Austin. But in spite of that, I think we had a very successful session. We have a few things we didn't get to, but we had some very, as August mentioned, we had some very good Second Amendment legislation. We passed Constitutional Carry, a number of other good Second Amendment bills. We preserved the education funding that we had the last session. We didn't have to give up anything on what we had done for our schools. We're really proud of that. Six months ago, we thought we were gonna have to cut budgets across the board, and we were worried about education. We were able to preserve that. In terms of life, I think you can say Texas has the best pro-life legislation in the country. We passed the heartbeat bill. We passed the trigger bill. And so I think in spite of all the obstacles that we've had, I think we've had a good session, but there's still a lot of work to do. And we're gonna have several special sessions. We already had one or two for redistricting coming later in the fall, but I suspect the governor will call us back probably later in the summer for unfinished business on election integrity, unfinished business on bail reform, and several other things. So I appreciate all of you very much. Palopinto County has been so supportive of me. I appreciate your prayers, your support, and I look forward to seeing y'all more over the next few months. It's good to be, it's good to be in Palopinto County away from Austin, I can tell you that for sure. So, thanks to everyone of you.
Y'all, everywhere I go, Brown County, E. Rath, all the way up into Palopinto, everybody is bragging about Glenn. They're talking about the job that he did. He's not, you know, we're freshmen, and it was the best session he had. That's true. People are bragging about the job that he did, the moral courage that it takes to stand up to some of these ideas in Austin. You know, I've spent a couple of days in Austin talking to all of the representatives that I overlap with and the senators, and they're bragging about Glenn Rogers as one of the most outstanding new members, somebody who's gonna be a leader in the state of Texas for a long time to come. Thank you for the job that you did and for giving us an update there. And I can tell you, not just being out of Austin, but being out of DC, every time my feet hit the ground in Texas is the best minute, the best new minute of my life. And it's great to be here today. What I thought I'd do is talk about a couple of things that are important, that are going on currently, that have previously gone on in the last five months, and then just open it up for questions and have a conversation with you. Any question you wanna ask on any subject. But the three things that I thought I'd start out talking about, one, as I've done town halls around these 29 counties, and by the way, we go from Palopinto all the way west to the New Mexico State Line, Andrews County, we've got Midland and Odessa, we go down through San Angelo to Lano County. So 29 counties of the best district, the best congressional district in the country. And for Roger Williams just east of here, I'll tell him that when I see him in a couple of days. And I think he knows it. But y'all, this is, it's a pleasure to be here. We're gonna talk about border security. That's the number one thing that these town halls have taught me, is that is probably the topic that everybody wants to hear about. We're gonna talk about our fiscal situation, the threat of new taxes, the things that are going on with our so-called infrastructure deal. And then I wanna talk about the oil and gas industry and the agriculture industry. So those are the topics that I wanna focus on, but ask any question that you want, and I'll kinda stop after each of those topics and answer your questions on that subject. So the president and the vice president have completely abdicated their responsibility to secure our southern border. They have completely abdicated. This is a federal issue. Very rarely will I come into Mineral Wells, Texas, and tell you that this is a federal issue. In fact, I'd much rather have Glenn Rogers stand up here and talk about how the state is doing good work and good business. But this is a federal issue. Protecting our country, our national security, our borders is a federal issue, and they have abdicated their responsibility to do that. I've spent some time at the border. The chief of the El Paso sector told me to my face the day we visited there that they had to pull 120 Border Patrol agents off of the front lines, off of their national security mission, off of the job of protecting our country, and relegate them to administrative jobs to process the amount of people. We had 172,000 folks that were apprehended, illegal immigrants apprehended in the month of March. That was a record. We broke that record in April with 178,000. And we're looking for the numbers in May as of today. I expected them yesterday, and I'm waiting to see what those numbers are. Y'all, this is a crisis of untold dimensions. It's not just the number of people. And I think what mainstream media wants us all to think is that these are families and children. That is true. There are a tremendous amount of families and children, and it's a harrowing experience. They are being exploited, they are being trafficked, $5,000 to $10,000 per person. The assaults that are happening on this 21-day journey, you know, from the Northern Triangle countries is, it's beyond our comprehension. It's a tragedy. But it's not just families and children. There are military-dressed folks in gear that looks like something that I wore while I was in the service that are coming through that are called gotaways. And just this year, first off, we don't know the number of gotaways. The administration won't tell us. But just this year, the Border Patrol agents, while we were in El Paso, told us that we've had four people on the known terror list who have entered this country who have been apprehended. That does not include, obviously, the ones who are gotaways. These are folks on a known terror list that don't wanna be caught. They don't wanna turn themselves over. They're coming here for malign reasons, not just to work and not as refugees like the mainstream liberal media would have us believe. This is a crisis. In Midland, Texas, we have an emergency intake facility that Health and Human Services opened up two months ago, a little over two months ago, in the cover of darkness with no coordination with the state of Texas, no coordination with local officials, with the mayor, with the judge, with the sheriff, with the hospital. Up to 500 to 700 children have been there and have been part of this facility as they're moving them through what they call the system. Y'all, this is a, I can't tell you what it is to go visit this situation or to visit this facility and see this situation. It's terrible. And I asked the lady that runs the facility, who's been doing this for almost 20 years, I said, "How many of these children right here are being trafficked?" And she said, "A majority are being trafficked." I mean, this is heartbreaking to think about just that. Biden's policies have caused this situation. Meanwhile, we see the vice president laughing a few days ago in an interview, saying she had been to the border. She has not been to the border, saying she had, and she was called out on national news. Said, "You have not been to the border." "Well, I haven't been to Europe," is what she responded. This is not a laughing matter. Our Border Patrol agents are suffering, our local law enforcement, and our communities right here in Mineral Wells and Palopinto are also feeling the effects because the DPS troopers are being sent down to fill in the gaps. That's the effect to us. The state of Texas, under Operation Lone Star, has sent 1,000 National Guard troops and 500 DPS troops from our local communities. And so when we call for backup here, Sheriff McGuire needs something. Well, guess what? That DPS trooper may be, they may be at the border. That's a real effect. In Midland, my question was, if these children need to go to the hospital, who's gonna pay for that? "Oh, don't worry Congressman, the Health and Human Services has got that covered." No, they don't. Last week, the CEO of the hospital called me and said, "We've had 41 visits since this facility opened up to the tune of $206,000, and zero has been reimbursed to the hospital." Zero dollars. That is an impact, not to the state, but to the local community. The lack of transparency, the abdication of the responsibility, and the fact that this administration will not visit the border tells me all I need to know. They don't care about the security of this country. This is shameful. We've introduced a couple of pieces of legislation. I hope that they help. We wanna reimburse the state of Texas and our local law enforcement and governments, especially those that are along the border, for the efforts that they're having to do and make to keep our border safe. Let me just tell you, the number one question I get is, well, can the state of Texas build a wall? The federal government's not doing it. Can the state of Texas do it? And the answer is no. This is a federal issue according to the Constitution. And trust me, I wish we could. But according to the Constitution, and we don't need, you know, this could set a dangerous precedent. The governor and Glenn Rogers are doing everything they can to protect where our president has abdicated. But we can't build a wall. That's the federal government's job. Let me pause there, 'cause I get a lot of questions on this subject, and answer any of your questions. Just shout them out, and I'll repeat them for the crowd. Yes, sir? The question is, why can't the state of Texas ship these children and I suspect others to Washington DC? And the answer is they are. They are. Folks are moving into the interior of the United States. We have 2 million people, and I met with ICE agents in San Angelo, Texas yesterday, and we talked about this. I asked them the question, it's not just, you know, the kinda mass loads of folks, but, you know, what if somebody gets pulled over and it's not a felony? And federal government has basically told ICE, "You can't deport anyone unless it's a felony offense, and we want you to use your discretion." So now we're leaving it up to 24 different ICE offices throughout the United States to make a subjective, per their discretion, decision. So if it's a violent crime, well, then we can. But if they're carrying, you know, just a few drugs, then we can't. They're gonna go through, and that's another cost that's gonna be placed on Palopinto County, on the court system here. But these folks are moving into the interior at taxpayer expense, on buses and on airplanes. And most of them have never seen a physician. Yeah, that's true. No, this is a terrible, it's a tragedy. I hear this word humane. Well, the other side of the aisle is saying that the previous administration was inhumane. That's not true. In fact, the policies that are now incentivizing cartels and coyotes and traffickers and criminal organizations, that is inhumane. They are incentivizing the trafficking of young children. I have a six-year-old. Have you seen the videos of the five or the six-year-old who was dropped over the wall and left in the middle of nowhere? And maybe it was a four-year-old or a three-year-old. We've all heard these stories. That is inhumane. The rule of law is the reason that folks wanna come to this country, and if we're not following the rule of law, then our compassion for all of our citizens is out the window, and that's inhumane. Yes, sir?
Good morning, sir. I'm Andy Walker. I retire Chief Master Sergeant, and I say, "There, boys."
Thank you for your service, sir.
Very welcome, sir. I've got this problem. You mentioned the border, but just the walls of the back of just as Chief Master Sergeant, they charge almost 300 people over the pipeline. You know exactly. I never had a problem with my pipeline. The reason I didn't have a problem is my trips. If they probably a problem, they better have a solution. If I brought them with a problem that they caused, they better not be with me. Sir, I'd like you to take that back to Washington and share that with colleagues. But you mentioned the border is a problem. It's a huge problem. A fiscal problem going on in the United States right now, they're just going on like they're pregnant like there's none tomorrow. Close a problem, sir. But I would, you could take back to Washington, where I, Andy Walker, feels root cause is a problem in DC. One, first and foremost, a stolen election. There's an illegitimate president.
It's a tragedy. What's going on? Yeah, Glenn, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just trying to point out that we were spending $800 million a year on the border, which we shouldn't have to. That's the end.
Are responding, but as you said, it's really, it's a federal obligation, and we shouldn't need to be doing that. We shouldn't, even the $1.2 billion that we're spending should be a federal obligation for it. But I just want everybody to know that we have increased our present.
The state of Texas is doing the lion's share of this. Unfortunately, they're taking DPS officers away from their families, they're taking them away from the communities that they're sent to protect. The money that's coming out of the state of Texas could be used for a host of other things in a better way if the federal government would do the job. And I appreciate what you and the governor and the state of Texas have done and will continue to do, I know. Getting warm out here, y'all. Faster and funnier. The fiscal situation in this country is alarming, to say the least. We spent 30 minutes debating, if you can call it that, the $1.9 trillion COVID relief plan that we had. 30 minutes. I mean, that's shameful. That is just incredible. That's the largest spending bill we've had in the history of our country, and we spent 30 minutes. They rushed this thing through at record speed, and now our kids and our grandkids have a tax assigned to them on the first day they're born. They've got a tax, not only with that, but with the infrastructure deal. Do we wanna move indoors, or do we wanna move in, I don't know if... Everybody doing okay?
Turn the fan back on.
Will you turn the fan on? I'll talk loud. I'll talk loud. We've got an infrastructure deal that has been proposed for $2.3 trillion. Less than 6% of that will go towards roads, bridges, highways, rural broadband, and traditional infrastructure. Y'all, that's not, I'm not okay with that. And meanwhile, the most important thing that we're looking at right now is the threat of new taxes. Anybody familiar with stepped-up bases? Capital gains? The death tax? These are the kinda things that are being proposed to pay for this legislation that's being passed at record speed. Guess what? It hurts rural America more than anywhere else. It hurts our farmers and our ranchers. It hurts the oil field. To say that $400,000 is the cutoff, and anybody who earns less than that a year is not gonna be impacted, is a false statement. All of us are gonna pay for this. In 2017, President Trump passed tax reform that lowered taxes to the lowest rate we've seen in decades. And in 2019, the result of that was the most tax revenue that this country has ever taken in. Now, think about that. The lowest taxes, the most revenue, unemployment at record lows, there's something to it. And right now, we're doing everything we can to pay people to stay at home. Reagan and I talked earlier, and raise your hand if you're having trouble getting employees to your business. Everybody. We're paying people to stay at home in the three hours. That's happening everywhere, all across this country. So not only Reagan are you competing in your business against other businesses in Mineral Wells, you're competing against the federal government. That's not how it's supposed to be. We're supposed to set a foundation that sets out a structure where we have a competitive marketplace. Y'all, I'm very worried about this. The good news is a silver lining. By the way, I'm gonna end this talk with some hope, okay? I want you to know, I have hope for this country. But I should've said it at the first, but don't worry, Neil. I have hope for this country, and I'll tell you why. But y'all, this is worrisome. I think they would've passed this tax legislation if they had the votes. That's the good news right now. They didn't have the votes to get everything done, they would've already passed it. They just didn't have the votes. We're gonna keep playing defense on this. We need to take the House back in '22 to get to the point where we can stop these bad ideas. Let me pause there. I know there's questions on fiscal policy, on spending, on taxes. What are y'all's thoughts? I'm glad it's humid because we've gotten some rain. What do I think the prospects are to stop it? The prospects to stop it are good in the Senate right now. We have two people, Kirsten Sinema and Joe Manchin, who are pushing back. They wanna hold the filibuster. They wanna keep that tool in place that keeps government in check. So I think it's decent right now. If that goes away, DC will be the 51st state. The Supreme Court will probably have 13 people on it. Our taxes will absolutely go up. We will pay people to stay at home. Right now, those two folks are holding strong. It's hard to think we're resting our hopes on two people. That's not how government's supposed to work. Government is supposed to be thoughtful. We're supposed to be deliberate. What you're gonna get out of me is somebody who goes with a practical tool and a solution. Like the Chief Master Sergeant said, we're gonna go with solutions. I've got solutions for the border. Don't overturn the policies that we had in place with Mexico that were working. Continue to work with Honduras and El Salvador and Guatemala, these countries who are losing millions of people because their governments are corrupt. And let's make sure that they keep people there because they know that we're gonna enforce our laws here. I had a call yesterday that your sheriff was on. By the way, let's give him a round of applause for the work that he's doing. He had some really good points yesterday. We had about 20 of the 29 sheriffs. I mean, it was a pretty good turnout. The number one theme that I heard, Sheriff backed me up on this, we got drugs coming across our southern border at record rates. A crime that we are seeing in our state and in our area is almost 100% due to the drugs that we have. And the reason that this is an issue is because we have a president and a policy that we're not enforcing the laws that we have. We have basically told our law enforcement, the federal law enforcement agents, to not enforce the laws. Again, back to the abdication. Your sheriff is doing a wonderful job, speaking up for Palopinto County, making it known what the issues are, and doing what he can, and everything he can, to keep us safe here. And I appreciate Sheriff, what you do, what your deputies do, Chad Jordan, and a ton of others. Thank y'all for keeping us safe here. Fiscal policy, spending, taxes, any questions or thoughts on that? Fans do help. Can y'all still hear me? You'll never know if I'm sweating because of your questions or because of the humidity. But let's talk about, real quick, let's talk about the oil and gas industry. I don't know if y'all know this, but the Permian Basin, this district has a majority of the Permian Basin in it, produces 40% of this Permian Basin in it, produces 40% of this country's oil. 40%. The United States is the number one producer worldwide. This is an instrument of power. This is national security. Energy security is national security. I sit on Foreign Affairs, and I sit on Homeland Security. Those are the two committees that I sit on. You might say, well, what does Foreign Affairs have anything to do with this district? Y'all, it has everything to do with this district. The cattle, the cotton, the agricultural products, the wheat export has everything to do. I sit on the subcommittee that represents trade. I am the voice for agriculture on that committee, and for energy. The folks in Eastern Europe that are our NATO allies, that are up against Russia, are very worried about the Nord Stream 2 pipeline. We didn't sanction them. We gave waivers now. President Trump was holding the line. New administration has given waivers. The number one question that these folks ask me, the ambassadors from Latvia, Lithuania, Poland, the Ukraine, Ukraine is facing some really tough times right now with Russia right there wanting to take over their country. They say, how can we get more natural gas from the United States? The Permian Basin is doing that. I'm going to tell you about why I'm hopeful, and I'm going to roll it into this, this particular subject. I'm working with Democrats across the aisle, and we've introduced a piece of legislation that would make it easier for us to get Permian Basin natural gas to these countries so that they're less dependent on Russia. That we would make it easier for the marketplace to work. We're flaring gas in the United States. Let's bottle it up, let's send it to Corpus Christi, and let's put it on a boat and get it to people that want it, and let's sell it to them for a profit. Let's let the marketplace work. I've got four Democrats who have signed up for that bill with me. Four. The majority only has five seats difference between Democrats and Republicans. I just need one more. Ted Cruz has co-sponsored this in the Senate, and we've got Joe Manchin targeted as the person who is going to help out. We're working on it. I'm hopeful because of some of the people that I'm serving with. Let me tell you about Carlos Jimenez and Maria Salazar, Cuban-Americans. Their families came from Cuba. They escaped authoritarian rule. They got out of communism. They came to this country because they know what voter suppression means. They know what authoritarian rule and the lack of freedoms mean. They came here, and now they represent Miami. They flipped it from Democrat congressional representatives to Republicans. South Florida is waking up to the fact that socialism is not a good idea in this country. And that's where we're headed with this administration. In Southern California, two ladies, Korean-American ladies, Young Kim and Michelle Steele, I'm hopeful because of them, their experiences. First-generation Americans, they raised their hand to be citizens of this great country because they wanted to live the American dream. They flipped two seats in Los Angeles for the first time in 25 years, because the folks in Los Angeles are waking up to the fact that they don't like socialism. And these two ladies are leading them out of it. They raised their kids, they started small businesses, they put their kids to school, and now they're Congresswomen, and they're standing up for their communities. How about Burgess Owens, Super Bowl winner, represents Utah, grew up in a hard time in this country in the 60s. His dad told him, work hard, earn it, get out there and make a difference. Guess what? Burgess Owens is making a difference every day, and I am hopeful because he's pushing back on this idea of poverty. And he's saying, no, you've got it wrong. The government is enabling people in this cycle of poverty, because you're paying people to stay at home. That's Burgess Owens. Victoria Sparts, from the Ukraine, she grew up in the Soviet Union. You want to talk about voter oppression and suppression? Victoria Sparts knows this. She's a voice for our country. What's the point here? The point is, we don't look like a certain thing. We didn't come from a certain area. We think like a certain way. It's giving voices to conservative thinkers in inner-city Baltimore, and Chicago, and Los Angeles, and Miami, and everywhere else, that it's okay to have faith in God. It's okay to be a conservative thinker, and to want a good future for your child, and to teach them personal responsibility, that they need to work hard for certain things in life. That's why I have hope. I go to a Bible study on Wednesdays at 8:00 a.m. in the Capitol Building, and I've been talking about hope. And just two weeks ago, the focus of our study was Romans 5, 1 through 5. And if you remember, in Romans 1, Romans 5:1, it says about the importance of faith, that we give way to faith, that we're justified by faith. And then in Romans 3, it talks about this, suffering, and that suffering produces perseverance, and perseverance produces character, and character produces hope. Y'all, our country's been suffering. We had a pandemic. Our small businesses were hurt. We're coming into a time where the liberal media is telling us how bad our country is. I'm tired of hearing that. I'm tired of hearing that. This is the greatest country in the world. Thank you. This is the greatest country that the planet has ever known. And I'm tired of hearing that it's not. We are going through some tough times. And I think if you look at that Bible verse, that we are somewhere between suffering and perseverance. And I would ask each of you to persevere, to continue to have hope in this country, because the character that we are building right now, we are going to emerge stronger. And Chief, I share your concerns. And just because I have hope doesn't mean I'm not going to go take action in Washington, D.C., on the very concerns that you have. And I know you didn't get to share all of them. But we are going to take action. I would ask you to have hope. I would ask you to have hope for this country. And I'm going to ask you to do something that's a little bit tough sometimes. Pray for our president. I may not agree. Pray for President Biden. We may not agree with him. I don't like his policies, but pray for him. Please pray for him. Y'all, it's, I'm going to hang around for a minute. It is really nice to be in Mineral Wells. I love coming here. You have great leaders who have fought over the past year to keep our businesses open, to keep our schools in session, to keep the economy going. It's a pleasure to be able to join onto a bill that Mr. Higgins has, to stand up for the maker and the crazy water, and to help these, our community get back where we need to be. You, you have wonderful leaders here. It's, it's a pleasure to be a part and a partner with them, and to be here. Thank you for spending some time in a hot, buggy day with me. And with that, just like to tell you, thank you.